This conference will now be recorded.
Please silence your phones.
Roll call, Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Butcher.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Here.
Mr. Butcher will lead us in prayer and pledge. Don't uh, please.
Our heavenly Father, the Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord, for letting us all week of the city this day, Lord. Oh, we want to thank you for this beautiful weather that we've had. No, we just ask that you bless the city commissioners and all the people in the city, Lord. Lord, we just ask that you may help us make the right decisions tonight as we conduct this service. Jesus's name, amen.
Mayor of the United States of America and the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. I salute the Black Act of the San Antonio, Mexico, the CS world, perfect friendship among different cultures.
Thank you, Mr. Gandy.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, except with a slight adjustment on the proclamation. We got a person running late. When they show up, we will address that at that time.
Second, motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bo. There any further discussion? Not roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mayor Chris Wiggum.
Yes. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Approval of the minutes from January 24th, 2022.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Bo, second by Commissioner Gandy. There any discussion on minutes? There's no discussion on the minutes, roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Mayor Chris Wiggum.
Yes. Moving past the proclamation, commissioners and staff reports, Shannon.
Well, we started early voting and we've had about 18 votes come out so far. So we're just planning on having more voting through the 25th. And then on the 26th, from 10 to 6, it will also be open on this Saturday before election day on first.
What's the tally right now?
Eighteen.
Is there any questions for Shannon? There's no question for Shannon. Ms. Kennedy.
Uh, do we have the entrance to the agenda? Where at that point or?
No, just if you had anything other than that, your spots right there.
Oh, okay. I have the one then. Okay.
Just if you had anything, just briefly discuss other.
Uh, no, I'll talk here in just a little bit.
Is there any questions for Ms. Kennedy and Treasure? Not going on the chief, our chief.
Mayor Commissioners, I was out for the last week and a half. Our numbers for COVID have dropped significantly and as a result officially starting today, the senior citizens had opened back up to the general public. So we were holding or hoping that the numbers stay low, but right now the numbers are showing a downward trend. So if there is another spike, I'll make sure to come to you guys and let you know if we have to do any changes on that schedule. Other than that, that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you.
Cheers, sir.
Is there any questions for chief? Is there no question for chief, Commissioner Bo?
I had two questions I was gonna ask the chief, but he's not here. I don't know if anybody knows as far as how's our going into the three county as far as with their call from the apartments. Everything is going good on that? We have any issues as far as with our 911 calls?
The LCCA.
Right. You combined. I don't.
Yeah, that's the form. Chief Miranda has not said anything negative, reported. He says it's going on pretty smooth now, but he didn't let me know the other night when they did that transition, there was no bumps. So but thus far, your staff is happy, the old dispatcher. So two of them went over there, two of them are here. And then one is going to be working part-time with the senior citizens and the other part-time at the library. So all five dispatchers are where they're supposed to be, sir.
The other question I had is how are we moving in as far as with the solid waste? It's been a while.
Okay, three, about three weeks back, they were out there doing the survey. So the survey along the soil samples. So they haven't got back with me. County manager Michael told me that once that's complete, then we'll do our part, which our part would be surveying the property to divide up the ballparks with solid waste area. So it's still at that point, I'm waiting on the soil samples. And once that comes in, then we can make the MBR if we have done.
So so while we're still on the LCCA thing, is can we invite them back? Like you have a complaint. Because if you call LC 911 during one of our water breakages here recently, I called. And by the time that you get to the Lovington dispatch part of it, to really to call the emergency people, I ended up calling chief. I lost my temper. I mean, because it's a long ways down.
Yeah.
I mean, it should be broken up, in my opinion, differently. You know, because you shouldn't have to listen to all Hobbs' garbage and then get 911 assistance or something like that, or have a call out. So that's what I ended up doing, calling the chief there and just because I was losing my garbage. So I would like to have a discussion with them on that because that is just horrendous the way that's set up, in my opinion.
And there's probably an SOP. I think that's what we need to develop, a good standard of operating procedure for it. And I think that's where it's probably lacking because right now the transition's still on, it's less than 30 days, so.
Like I said, I agree with Scotty. It doesn't matter if it's if it's positive or if it's negative. We need to hear from people in the community, people that are calling. And if there's something that needs to be fixed, then we can do something about fixing it. So it's easier to help everybody out.
Yeah, because the way it used to, we called the 2011, you know, the number that's not known. And that's how we would get that number out. Well, now we call 911 and then you have to wait for all the call options. And there should be a different setup on that. Maybe they're adjusting that, you know, but it would be nice to have another recap session and discuss that. Okay. Maybe chief or somebody.
I guess Jayden can do that for you too.
Chief Miranda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, I would just like to give a shout out to Ms. Laura Roth for all the hard work she's put in on the marijuana situation. I call it marijuana, a lot of people call it, but it is what it is. And just want to say thank you for all the hard work and effort put together for us as commissioners so we can move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Bo, I mean, it's Commissioner Gandy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna let that one go. No, I don't have anything to say.
Only thing I had on the agenda on my side of it was that ballparks are, we plan to have them all ready by April 1. I did talk to the league, the league says they start their games on the 15th, but right now our strategy is have it April 1. So that if there's any hiccups in the road, we've got two weeks to fix it. So right now the lights, you might see the ballpark lights on and then you might see them on all night. And the purpose of that would be is just to ensure that they're not turned off. We had some problems before where we turn on the lights, three hours later it gets too hot, trip a brake breaker. So I told them leave them on all night to ensure that they're getting adequate loadage and so forth. We won't have any type of blackouts after that call me. And also the bathrooms there, I asked the public if they see anybody late evening at the ballparks and have no business being there to contact the police department. Because currently, right now, we're gonna have to put money into all the ballparks, all the bathrooms, since they're vandalized, as well as the Shepherd Road part. And I know right now, just the Shepherd Road part, the lotion costs six thousand, just to replace the fixtures in one bathroom. And because one was vandalized, it's costing six thousand. So I imagine we'll probably be out of probably about 10 by the time we get all the bathrooms done with the ballparks. So I just ask the public, if they see anybody that's supposed not be there after, probably after nine, should contact PD on that.
I have a question to bring that up. You didn't take, can you get an update with her?
Okay.
So she was doing some stuff with a, just they had success or failure or whatever? Curious.
That's all I have. Jayden?
Hi, yes, sir. Crystal had asked me to update you all on the PSA that went out for Constructors' Eats for that notice of closure. And it was supposed to begin today, but talking to Brittany, they did not close today. So staff will reach out to Constructors' Eats to see if we need to release a new PSA. But they're planning to close Main Street from Central to First Street to go ahead and cross over and work on that line. But like I said, staff will reach out to them and see if that needs to be updated. So expect detours on Main Street coming up in these next couple of weeks. And then after this section, they'll shift over to A to Adams. And that's all I have.
Any question for Jayden? I have one more item I wanted to mention. The swimming pool, the liner on the swimming pool, I'm still trying to contact a contractor to put a new liner in the pool. As everyone knows, it's pretty hard to get contractors these days. I've reached out in different areas. That's that's right now the only one that I'm worried about. The button and everything will be ready April 1, but the pool is, I've got to get the liner in there. The city has to get a liner in there so we can get that pool open. And that's that's a whole plaster job, about a hundred thousand dollar job. So I'm trying to find a contractor that's fully knowledgeable there. Yeah. So it's gonna be a big, big dollar amount, right, for just to get the pool running this year. Chief Miranda, a couple of questions. You'll sort of have to answer them before you start. Is Commissioner Bo? Yes.
Wanted to see how the LCC was going as far as any issues, anything, a smooth transition. Before you elaborate too much, I know that Commissioner Gandy also had something to add to it also, but just want to hear how things are going.
And that was one of the two things I was gonna mention. So I'm happy to report that the dispatch merger with LCCA is complete. Of the five dispatchers that we had before the merger, two are now records clerk that remain with our department. One transferred to another city department and two are employed at LCCA at substantially higher pay. This reorganization represents a reduction from eight approved dispatch positions to two record clerk positions, representing a savings of over $342,000 to the department annually. All patrol computer systems have now been switched over to the spill-in system and there's been no impact to the public. So the merger is officially complete.
That's good. As far as citizens, as far as being able to.
I have had no complaints of. Yet. Response times, there's been some bumps in the road transitioning over to new computers. I will say that LCCA has kept our old dispatchers on dispatching our traffic. So these are dispatchers that if they don't live in Lovington, they're familiar with Lovington. But I haven't heard of any problems from citizens that have any issues.
Mr. Gandy, would you like?
So my my concern with the dispatch of the police, it's what we used to do, was a couple of police station to dispatch waters or different entities like that. And if you call the police, then you go down their call system, because it's not an emergency, go down it and you go down it and you go down it. And 30 minutes later, you're still going down and trying to draw who wants us to contact. There's gotta be another system or a better way to do that because after 20 minutes of listening to the crap that I'm probably not trying to get to in Hobbs, I was very aggravated. So I called the fire chief to get something done. So I just wanted to maybe get back with them and address that situation because that is how we used to contact people, right? Because I actually drove up here that's the night of the transition and I feel sorry for the little girl because it was a pretty huge decision for me and my wife. And I drove down the street left her for a few minutes to calm down. So but because she didn't, she couldn't even call anybody. She didn't, at that point, she didn't know who to call to dispatch because she was confused in that change of. Now, I haven't called since then, but you know, I haven't taken a walk or gone out either.
It's my understanding now that one of the first prompts you hear is for Lovington streets. And they give all of our departments in one prompt, so it's a catch-all. If you want that, you hit it. And I forget if it's pound or one or two or five.
Okay, well, like I said, I haven't tried it lately, but maybe I should. And where I voice my true complaint.
I would be happy to set up a meeting with Angela Martinez and yourself and myself. And, you know, she runs LCCA and she's responsible for the water attendants, is what they call it.
Okay.
And so that doesn't happen. I have not heard of any problems. It doesn't, I think it takes 30 seconds to get through all the prompts or something or, but there is always an option that if you need to speak to a dispatcher, I think it's pound or I forget the number you need.
Okay.
So, but.
That was my complaint. So. And as I said, irregardless, it doesn't matter if it's pros or cons, if it's people saying it's great or people having, you need to have input.
Yes.
Regardless, that way there, if there's something that's not right, we can fix it. And I understand that we're not gonna make everybody happy. It's not the case that we can do that, I understand. But if we can make it, then it's good for the citizens, they know how to use it. We don't have issues, you know, that's what I'm looking at, so.
Agreed. And LCCA has been very responsive and I'm sure we have the needs to be addressed the world with us to make it better, which they've been great, so.
Thank you.
Sir. The only other thing, Mayor Commissioners, we conducted two interview boards. We conducted interview boards last week for four new officers, two certified and two uncertified. We have two additional indications of interest. I've been authorized by the mayor to hire up to five officers at this point to reevaluate in the new fiscal year. Currently, we have 28 authorized sworn officer positions, of which 17 are filled of the 11 vacancies, 10 are patrol division. So. But we have five or six interested people.
And I have five or six interested people. Who are good quality candidates.
Two are certified. And they're both very good quality. And then of the other four non-certified, I think three are actually promoted.
So you think there's a possibility of having all.
Probably not, probably four. We can get one or two of the certified, that'd be great. We have to put the other three through the academy, we're willing to do that. But they're from here, so we don't feel like they're gonna leave.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Nothing at this time, Mayor Commissioners, to report.
Anybody have any question for Brittany sitting in for Crystal Ball right now? See, turning, McMahon?
Yeah, thank you. So other than some comments on cannabis business license later, I haven't had anything to report, standard question.
Any questions for McMahon? No question for McMahon, moving on to public comments. Anybody have anything this evening?
Are you kidding me?
Okay, moving on, moving on to non-action items.
We need us to get up.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, the first non-action item is a discussion of library board appointments.
Yes, sir. Michelle Williams has resigned her position. We do have interest from Rebecca Gandy and I know there is an issue with nepotism or conflict of interests. But as this is an advisory board, we don't see that there'd be any conflict. But if anybody else is interested, they can reach out to City Hall and we'll consider at the February 28th meeting.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to the next item.
The next item is a discussion of stop sign request by Lovington Transportation.
Brittany?
Me.
Okay.
So Crystal, let me know that Robert Dela Cruz with Lovington Transportation reached out to her and asked that we go ahead and hold off on this. They, he did see that Fifth Street and Jackson, it was not good to put a stop sign there because it is an arterial road for emergency vehicles. So they they also are going to look at updating their facilities, especially their drop-off and pickup at the Taylor Middle School. And with it being only, I don't know how many days left of school, they just want to hold off on it, review it through the summer and then come back maybe next year to. Well, they'd have to go through planning and zoning to do any kind of updates to their facilities. But for now, we're just going to hold off on it and not put any stops. And they also saw that if they did temporary stop signs, they wouldn't have the manpower and we don't have the manpower to put anybody out there. So for now, they just want to hold off.
Is there any questions, Bo?
Yeah.
There are no questions about the board.
Chief, Mr. Mayor, the final non-action item is a discussion of appointing the District Five Commissioner.
I put that on the agenda. Wanted to bring it back back to the board's attention. The last time we had discussion on this, Liz White still had the possibility of having a write-in candidate. So we moved forward and we said we would not point right now. She is the only one on the ballot and she is pretty much, as long as she votes herself, she should take that position. Angel, here in the March, if April 1 is sworn in, then I would just see if the board had any discussion on bringing her forward any time sooner. And Patrick, did you want to elaborate on that?
Well, I think that under the circumstances, given that she's the only person running, I think it's probably not a bad idea to take that into consideration. Just so we get her in there sooner rather than later and that district can get a little bit more representation perhaps. And at least get her feet on the ground now as opposed to, you know, middle of March, so.
And she'd be really appointed now and then become elected official.
Right, so.
She'd still be sworn in as appointed, isn't that correct?
Right, so she would still have to go through the election process if, you know, something out of the ordinary happens with the election process. And that's that's not our area of expertise, that would be with Manus. But, you know, she would be appointed up until that point in time. And then once the election happens, then she would just go through the normal process of, you know, being sworn in and the other things that occur as far as the election, so.
Is there any discussion about office?
So you're not appointing her tonight, correct?
No.
She's going to be appointed next meeting, right?
That's correct.
So give her one meeting.
To meet you in March.
Up to the March.
Yeah, because because March, they don't officially come in office till April, about the first week of it. That's when it's sworn in.
I thought, because I thought mine was way here.
No, no, it was.
Because usually you were voted, put in and then so then you're left through the transition there.
Yes.
Because I know that a friend of mine in Hobbs, now his situation is different. He's a running and he has to run the elections, so he is a, whatever, can't, not candidate. He's a. But in this situation, I mean.
That's three meetings, but whatever. And they will come up quick and put it in action.
Well, I honestly felt the same way. We have some talked, say it just late and let's just follow regular procedure. And I was fine with that, looking at it, you know, and taking shots or anything, I'm just saying that we haven't seen Liz here that much. And with her being here, she's able to see how business is conducted, what we're doing up here. And that, you know, putting in the seat, it's a little bit different than being out in the crowd. Sure. And I'm speaking firsthand.
And I was under the impression that in March election, the next Monday, that's the way we were set up. You know, you, in the next month showed up, you were in the seat. So I figured one more meeting, what, what's the difference? So, you know, it's like, that's ridiculous. I didn't realize that had changed, so they want to throw her in here.
And then you're otherwise.
Well, what I wanted to do at the last, at the last meeting where we discussed it, there was still a possibility for a write-in. So I didn't want the the city commission to talk about it, decide to put her in on a temporary basis. And then if somebody did apply as a write-in candidate, have them come back and say, well, that's that's a, you know, disadvantageous to me because you've already given her a standard approval. So that's why we waited until write-in candidates were done and so we had one person on the ballot and, you know, so.
And that's what I, based on your legal advice, you're here to advise us, that's what I'm basing it off of.
Right.
So, but if you're fine with moving forward.
I'm fine, I think it's a good idea to do, it just gets a person's feet on the ground, starts sooner, so.
Right. Finally, also.
I call it a bell-dawn for hell all day.
Yeah, but it's one other person to be up there and helping decisions and also feel fired too, so.
But also, also, so District Five would have their representative.
Yes, representative.
That was brought up the other day. So really, as a commission, we have districts, but we do absolutely nothing for individual districts. We're too small for that. So by saying that, it's kind of be our District Five representation, the way I look at it. Because what individual project has District One had?
But the thing one is.
I understand what you're saying.
If she answers to her constituents, if she doesn't go by what her constituents want, then they remove her from office.
Yeah, but that's the thing, but she's, the reality is, the reality, we all serve District Five. So there's that question of what are you doing for your individual districts? I do absolutely nothing for my individual district because I'm looking at the community as a whole. So I kind of, I understand that our, we tend to our individual constituents in the direction they'd like to see, but as there's there's some conflict there for me, yes, so.
Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion, moving on to action items. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table resolution 2022 dash 0077, change order for the Main Street water line project. Double paperwork is received from.
I'll second the, motion was made to table by Mr. Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any further discussion on that? Is there no further discussion?
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Chris Wiggum.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
I think to make a motion, resolution 2022 dash 0077, approve to pursue Jackson Street project. Sorry.
Motion was made by Mr. Bo, second by Mr. Gandy.
Hello, Mayor Commissioner. So what this is, before you, is the CES agreement for the Jackson Avenue Street Improvement Project. The reason this had to be renewed was due to the time lapse and the change in basement pricing that they have for CES. So once this is renewed, it's been renewed, we've received the new contract, which has already been awarded, to be very clear. We've already awarded this, the funds have already been awarded, we're just renewing it. We have that, we've got the new estimate for Ramirez and Sons. And now all we need is reapproved by you guys, by the commission, so that we can move forward with the project and meet the deadlines that are placed by the current contract that we already have. So all this is, is for you to review and approve, so.
And I need to add, Crystal had asked me to reach out to Jim Baranting with CES. He had actually come in once and met me in person, but he was kind of explaining to me the process for POs and blue book, blue book process for funding the project, which we're gonna need to jump into pretty quick after this gets through tonight. He was just kind of explaining that we can kind of.
that we can kind of set up our own process for that. Anyone can email the PO. And he gave me the email address for that. But he said that Blue Book will need to be updated to determine whom will be able to have access to view and to upload and view. So we'll need to look at that. But I did let Jim know that my girls are going through a procurement class all week this week. So they may play a relatively large part in that. And I'll be probably a reviewer for the process. So I may not even be the upload person if I just have view only. That might help with a little bit of, you know, dual control on the process, so.
And so, you know, one of the things that we've done in past projects, everything is approved out in field. Either, once it's approved between the contractor and myself as project inspector, it will go to normally the city manager or interim city manager. They will approve of everything that we've reviewed and what we've agreed on, having satisfied these. Once that's done, it's between, Ramirez and Sons should be sending their invoice off and then we send ours out after that for reimbursement from CES. I believe that's normally how that goes.
Okay.
Yeah, if we do a different approvals on yours, on your behalf too as well, of any documentation we could bring up on our next board meeting.
Yeah, I didn't know how formal we needed the, the Blue Book approvals to be done because I didn't know. And also Jim wasn't sure how we had handled that in the past. But I just needed to kind of bring that up. And maybe we need to have the level to be able to make those decisions. In the meantime, we're not holding up purchase orders.
I have past documentation. I keep books of all projects from design to completion of how we've done those POs in the past. I can get those to you and we can sit down and go over that if that's what you would like to do.
Yeah.
What's the expected starting date on that?
As soon, as soon as possible. As soon as we get this approved, everyone wants to start as soon as possible.
Okay, we also get extension from the state.
I believe Crystal reached out to them due to the circumstances of COVID and everything that we had to do and how the funds were put on hold or the issues that we had with that and the renewal of the contract. We're well in advanced of the 60 days asking for renewal. That should be no problem for us, or not renewal, for an extension on the project. So that's up right now. Tendatively, we should be able to get an extension. We're going to try to operate to still meet our deadline. That is my current goal right now, so.
I believe Crystal has not heard back from them. It's not mentioned.
It's only a two-week project, right?
No. So this is a complete removal of the top three inch layer. And then we're also going to go down to base force. I don't, I don't believe I have their expected time, but at least maybe a month.
One month.
If, if, if even. That's worst case.
Where, where?
So it, it starts from Main Street to Bank Street. So one of the reasons we're doing a little bit more than we're normally, normally you just till up the top two, three inches and you put something back on because, so.
No, no, I just, I'm just thinking you got the school project right in the middle of this. They already got issues there.
So we, I already raised concerns about that and the traffic control around that area. We're going to be talking to the bus bards, the FD tours and stuff like that, how we can best help the motor in public for people to pick up their children. And so we already got that covered. We're in communication with the schools. Everything's up there to where they won't be inhibited or they won't have any issues picking up their children. We're going to try to make it as smooth as possible.
So I'm figuring that's at least 60 days.
But here's the deal. The reason it has to happen at this time.
No, no, I'm just, they'll leave the time because that's a half mile, that's a good half mile or better.
Well, and I can get back to you on the for sure time spent of the project. I'm saying, because I wasn't 100% sure on how long that they projected the timeline to be, I'm saying a month, worst case scenario. It could be the two weeks that you said. But I don't have the documentation of the projected timeline for Ramirez and Sons. We don't have that at that time.
Is there any other questions by the board?
Sure.
No other questions by the board, roll caution.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Cudill?
Yes.
President passes. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022-004, approval of senior citizens for deportments of Alicia Backsley, Wilma Kimwell, and I butchered every one of those names in Virginia Spears.
I'll second that. Motion was made by Mr. Dandy, second by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any questions? Chief, how, from your perspective, how do you feel that the board has been successful with the senior citizens? Do you feel all the three board members?
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, I kind of came into play over the last year, year and a half with the senior citizens board. And we've only had one or two meetings, had one meeting that I've been a part of. And that was largely due to COVID, COVID concerns prior to that. So my one little bit of being a part of that board, it seems like it's going decent, but I know that they, they need to have another meeting here pretty quick. So I think that a lot of the COVID restrictions have put a halt to a lot of the plans that they would have had with the board. So I don't have very much experience with the board.
After talking to Fay, I believe all of them are very active.
How many positions do they have open?
Five, I want to see.
So the three that are up here and then two others?
Yes, I want to see. It's five.
Okay. And as far as, it's hard to say off of one or two meetings, as far as the people showing up, the people that are on the board showing up to meetings, being there, you know, you said, they seem to be very active in it, so.
The one meeting I was a part of, there was everybody on the board except for one member, which is not on that list.
I know those three ladies in public, they're very good at that. They let me know. So I don't feel that they're slacker or anything like that.
Is there any further questions? No further questions. Roll caution.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution passes.
Resolution 2022-002, approval of health insurance rebate, 10% back to employees.
Okay, so I was in contact.
Wait a second.
Okay.
Motion was made by, both second by. Mr. Dandy?
Okay. I was in contact with Cindy Conley. She is our representative with United Healthcare. And she explained to me that there's actually a difference in the types of rebates. So we were kind of talking apples and oranges with this. The three types are called MLRs. There's a medical loss ratio federal, a medical loss ratio state, and a performance funding. The, the large amount, the 206,000 that we were discussing, that is a performance funding rebate. And that is done on individual insurance levels. And it's kind of meant to be a perk of using their healthcare policies as opposed to doing self-insure. And so what they're doing is they compare what you actually spent in healthcare versus your premiums. And that's where the rebate is calculated. That's how it comes back to you. And that's so that you're not enticed to say, well, we've been paying a lot less medical bills than we would have paid in premiums. So we're just going to decide to do a self-insurance. And so what, what that has done is, she said the last time that we qualified for it was in 2017, and it was for $12,000. So we just had a huge rebate that was completely out of the ordinary. This type of performance funding is calculated based on the percentage of the premium and the efficiency. And it comes in the form of a credit. So it does not come in the form of a check. And this credit does not need to be shared with employees. It doesn't need to be credited to employees. It is just because we paid in excess of premiums than what was paid out by the policy. The difference is, though, the MLR, which is the one that we, we thought we were referring to when we talked about the Department of Labor release, the MLR is the one that was established with Obamacare. And it's a, like I said, there's a state and a federal. They said New Mexico hasn't qualified for the federal. And so that wasn't part of the discussion. But on the state level, we did receive a check for approximately $12,000 in December. And that amount must be distributed or shared with the employees by reducing the withholdings. So we're talking about a much, much smaller number now. And it's 12,000 versus the 200,000. And that's going to be a more similar number going forward. And so we just need to establish a policy that these MLRs, which come in the form of a check, do have to be either split out to the employees that paid into that plan year. And then that's where we come into this, this five-page guidance of how to split that out. Or we can just kind of make it simple and just withhold or reduce the withholding until that amount is, is used up. And so that gives you all a lot, probably better information to make a decision on. But I do still think that we need to make some sort of policy of what to do with both the check forms and the credit forms. And I've given you kind of just some attachments in your notes here. And this, for example, this is a little brochure that they gave me to kind of sell their, their performance funding product. And then this question and answer facts about the medical loss ratios. So there's some information for your reader, but that's basically a summary of what she explains the difference between the, the type of rebates.
So, so what you're telling the board is this 10%, which adds up to approximately 20,600 would be distributed, can be distributed back to the employees as a form of a credit currently, or not?
The, the 20, or the, well, the 12,000 that we received in December. And she did give me a,
Was it?
Probably a check and everything.
Was it 10% of the 200, 260,000?
Yeah, when we were first discussing it, we, we thought we had to disburse approximately $20,000.
Okay, but it's only, now it's 12,000, is that what you're saying?
Well, it already happened in December. We took the check in December. Now I don't know what's been done with it, if it was determined at that time to disperse it out or to do the, the other. And then this came right kind of on the heels of that. And so it caused the, the question to arise about what do we do with this 206,000 that we were going to keep 90% of, disperse the 10%. But that's not, that's not necessary. And then it goes back to the questions we were discussing about how, if we were to split that up, how would we split it? We would then have to take money out of general fund to pay it on a payroll. We do the tax deductions, all of that stuff. She's just said that's not necessary because it's a perk to the policy holder, so that we continue to use their policy.
So for accounting practices, what would you recommend?
Well, we, we have to do something with the 12,000 that we had received in December. So we'll need to look back into that and determine that that was either dispersed out or that they'll get a credit for however much that splits up for the employees that paid into it during that year. And so that, that will go back to this list that I generated, thinking we were splitting up 20,000. Now we're just splitting up 12,000. So we can reference back to the same 69 current employees. It's a simple division on that. So approximately 12 divided by the 69 employees is, is about $174. And so that's basically probably not even one full insurance.
Exactly, before taxes.
Yeah, that would be before taxes. So if we, if we were to turn around and pay that, we would be, you know, it would, it would not give them the insurance holiday, basically. But we would be paying that, which would be fine because there actually was money put into the general fund in the form of a check. So we could turn around and pay that out. But yes, we'd have to pay the taxes on it as, as income. And so the only other thing we could do is say, okay, well, because we received this check, this, these employees will have a basically reduction in one month medical insurance of $174. So like, for example, myself, having not been on the policy during that rebate year, I wouldn't be entitled to any of that money. And so I wouldn't get a insurance holiday and I wouldn't get a check, depending, you know, determined by which route you decided to take. But then the other people would get, you know, either a check or they would just not have $174 taken out of their check to pay the policy, the insurance for the month.
So the best way to do it would basically be to be given a credit.
Yes, we, we can do either with the rebate, the MLRs, but we don't have to do either with those, the large performance rebate, which, and that's the biggest one we've gotten. And like she said, we haven't even received one of those since 2017. So that's just kind of a perk for our policy with United.
So given a credit, they would have basically one, one, they would have a lesser payment.
Yeah, and if, if you look down this deduction history report that I had attached, you know, these, it buries depending on how many, if they're, if it's just an individual or if they have family policy. And so it probably would equate to probably about at least one paycheck that would have a medical deduction from it.
Because basically when given that credit, you'd be getting more bang for your buck instead of having to pay taxes on that too.
Right, right. And it's, you know, that, that would reduce their non-taxable income for that pay period. But it would be very inescuel compared to what our collective tax would be as a payroll tax. So we would basically have to pay their tax and our tax if we were to give them a check.
Yeah, it's always matching.
Right. Yeah, we couldn't ask them to match it if it was. We just called it a bonus. Then we would have to withhold it, like, what is it, 35% withholding? So now they're down to, that's $100. That's about $61 taxes out of their 170.
Right. I think based on what Miss Kennedy's telling you, the first question is, you need to look at, you know, we're not obligated to do anything with the 206,000. So that, that's an option for you. With the 12, we need to go back and find out where that went, where it is. And then I think take her recommendation on how to get it back to that employee with the least amount of tax input, or obligation added on to that employee.
Is, is the resolution stated correctly here that about the insurance rebate of 10% back or do we? Is, is the resolution stated correctly here then about the insurance rebate of 10% back or do we need to put 12? Do we need to, do we need to?
Well, I, I think what we probably need to do, if it may belong, is find out, did we do anything with that $12,000 check we got in December?
No, I just stated this, yeah.
Okay. Okay, then I, I think probably the proper way to handle it would be to just have a discussion tonight on which way you want to go. And then based on that discussion, then I think staff or Ms. Kennedy could put together another title for that resolution at our next meeting that matches up with, because this is all pretty new information and is different than where we thought we were at the last meeting, so.
Yeah, and keeping in mind, that, that would be based on giving the entire 12 that we got back. If we were to do the 90-10 split like we were discussing with the 200,000, then now we're even at less. Now we're down to $1,200 being split between 69 employees. And so in that case, you know, we have to do one or the other. We do have to do one or the other. But we could decide to give them 100% of it back, the 12,000 that not be received.
And that's the MLR funding?
Yes, MLR. And it, like I said, she gave me a copy of the check and how it's deposited and, and what the checks have stated on it.
So basically, we should have a resolution next meeting that states that the ML, MLR rebate would be distributed between the employees that were employed between said times. And that divided evenly with a credit in their paycheck that would give them the least amount of tax burden.
Yeah.
And us the least amount of tax.
And something probably pretty generic like that, so we can use it every year. If, if we received a check, but yes, we can, in that, in that ordinance, we can define the difference between these two rebates. And kind of just describe exactly what we'll do with each one going forward if we receive it.
Would you both be wanting to enter?
Do we just both know?
Yes.
Because that would be the best, instead of ending it, we just vote no on it. That kills the whole motion and we start over again. Then she'll have something back for discussion next meeting, we can talk about it before we decide to move forward.
Correct. There's no further discussion, roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Bolt?
No.
Mr. Shannon?
No.
Mr. Butcher?
No.
Mr. Pidger?
No. Resolution fails. Moving on to next resolution, staff motion?
Mayor, let's make a motion for resolution 2021-111, approval for the advertising ordinance related to cannabis business license, amending reserve section 5.16.0402.
Was made by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Bolt, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. If you'll look at the paperwork that's in front of you, the only thing that I think from the last one that I was presented to you, that was actually good and read, so that'd be really simple and easy for you. These are areas in which y'all requested that were looked into. It's the location restrictions, the minimum separation distance that added, you know, the schools, the parks, the daycares, but it also was added to the church at your request. I did speak with the state licensing department and got the okay to add the church because I didn't know if that was going to be able to be an issue or not. Again, here back, they said we could. Density, there, so that way that it's not, you know, overpowered and it kind of keeps them away from each other and spread out. That was an issue. The measurement is technicality on straight line, how do you measure from property to property, just so that it's in there, so there's no questions. And the zone requirements. On the zone requirements, it's my recommendation not to put it in, but if you want to put it in, this is the way that I would put it in. It is not so, it's not real simple when it comes to the zone requirements. You have every property is different size, shade, where the building's at, the space that's there. You can be in zone A, have a small backyard, you can fit hardly anything. You can have a large backyard, you can fit several buildings and be able to meet those requirements. I did give each and every one of you a copy of, kind of made it short for you on what the permitted uses were in each zone and those that had the prohibited uses. Just to, to kind of give you a simple overview of what zoning looks like, plus the added requirements, which is what I'm talking about, like distance for side yards, setback backyard, setback, structure setbacks. There's those extra things that are added in there. So that way it's more complex than just saying, oh, well, this can simply, if we say, oh, in zone A, we're going to allow this. There's more, say, let's just use micro brewery, for example, or micro producer. Not brewery, sorry, micro producer. So if I say, okay, yes, you can have this, but then they don't meet the requirements in order to be able to fit a structure to be able to grow it in. Then if you say overall, yes, they can do it, but that one person's home may not, or that one area may not be able to do it. So it's not real, I don't recommend generalizing it that broadly. And also there's different tiers to each group of type of things. So if you want to go more complex than that, I feel it should go into the zoning ordinance, not to the business registration. And that's going to cost, Patrick and I looked at that one with Ms. Shannon and the water department worked, thinking roughly it was 30, 31 to $32,000 for notification to change the zoning ordinance. And we could get more detailed, so like on micro producing, you have two different tiers that I have read at this point. And one is, you know, from like 101 plants and less, or 101 to like 200, then you have 200, and 200 is max. So it's 100 and less or the 101 to 200. So you have two different things you're looking at, so you're not just saying it's just one thing. So it's split up into different categories within those categories. Does that make sense? So it's, it's very complex. Now that I've confused you all, have fun.
Then we need to address the church issue, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, that was added in there.
That's one thing that was my concern.
So my concern is basically as long as it matches up with the alcohol, you know, it's so far away from a church, so far away from the schools, so far away from preschool, so far away from, that way it matches up there, you know, any things as far as smell and everything, just go back to our zoning. You know, the, the state's pretty much our hands in a couple of other areas, but just since us getting super detailed on that. On the, what do you call it? Density, I feel density will take care of itself. I could be wrong, maybe there's going to be 12 places that are able to sustain themselves around the courthouse, that'd be awesome, you know. You know, so maybe we would generate gross receipts, but I don't, I can't really see that happening. So I don't know if we need to regulate that or not, because the way we're set up now, you could have 12 bars in a row. We don't have anything like that against alcohol. So as long as the churches, schools, all those are covered.
And alcohol doesn't allow us to do density where cannabis does, that's where those are two different, where cannabis allows you to, but I see your point, just so we know.
But if you have a density problem, you're probably going to have a smell issue and then our zoning should kick in, in that.
Correct.
In that area. So.
There are burning discussions.
So this is.
No, if you don't want the density, you need to, so when you go to make a motion, if you don't want the density in the zone requirements, you would need to remove those and just keep the minimum separation distance, which includes your churches and your schools and the measurement one. That would be my recommendation if you want to take out the density.
So is that on the red page?
Yes, sir.
It should be in, I mean, well, no, that was so that you can look over what's, what's allowed in each zone, so that you had an idea of what the prohibited and what the permitted uses were at a glance, put together for you. To try to make it a little bit easier for you to understand on where these areas are going to be and what's going to be in those areas. Or if you had any questions.
So what do we need to remove?
If you don't want the density, you need to remove that, which is what's, talking about. Then he feels the density will take care of itself. He doesn't believe that we're going to have a problem of, you know, shop coming in, shop after shop after shop in a whole area. He thinks that there's, it's going to be fine. And then if it becomes a problem with odor, because then our ordinance states that, you know, if there's odor issues, then we can address that under that, so he's.
Well, let's, let's just keep the density there, just in case there are another commercery that, that could be like, let's say on outskirts of town, just right off city limits and there is no odor. And you got two months density.
But you can't do anything on the outskirts of town?
No, I'm talking about like right at the city. Just like right here on, for instance, on the Tatum Highway, you know, all that property, you know, four or five, set up right there. Nobody's going to complain about the odor because there, there's nobody around. I mean, we can keep it in there just as another safety measure.
But the density, you're looking at basically one store per city block.
Right, at the 300th street.
In all the, my travels in Colorado, I've never seen them following the same ones, I don't, you know, I just kind of disagree, so it's not a problem. Patrick, do you see any problems with any of this, other than the fact that you don't?
Well, I mean, it's, it's all brand new, so that's kind of a loaded question, do I see any problems?
Oh, let's start there.
A lot of it's going to be enforced, but I think Laura did a pretty good job addressing two of the issues and for most of your concern. One was the issue about churches, and I think she contacted state, we got an answer back. And so that's a very defensible position to start with as far as the state, or as far as the churches are concerned. The second thing is to look at, you know, how to apply or make changes to zoning to deal with some of these issues. And I don't know if that's really necessary or not. And so example we looked at before was an individual growing a certain number of plants in residential. In our zone A, you can have a nursery or truck gardening, you know, for commercial purposes. But it also says in there that you can't do it on a scale that would be objectionable because of noise or odor. So we, we've got some ways to deal with that. And I don't think it's smart to spend the time and money to change that. So what would be important is that to take a look at the motion that was made. I think was made based on the form of the ordinance that Laura gave you. And so that's what's going to be voted on, thumbs up or thumbs down. And so each one of you then need to take a look at how you feel about that density issue or, you know, adding the church in like we do with schools and, and decide to vote from there. So are there problems? I don't know, this is all brand new. There may be no problems, there may be a slew of problems. But I think the issue in front of you right now is to take a look at that form of the ordinance that was moved and seconded and then discuss that, see what your concerns are. And, and you might be able to get somebody to amend their motion, maybe, maybe not. I'm not saying you should or you shouldn't, I'm just saying those are the options, that's what's, what's available to you here. I, I would probably have to agree with you, I think that, you know, the density issue is going to take care of itself, probably. And, but we also have to look at, you know, do we have the warm bodies to enforce some of the things that are in here? Because that's going to be important also because enacting this, sending it out for review, bringing it back in front of the commission for approval. What, what are we really doing if we don't have live bodies to actually go out and enforce it? And there's some very technical parts of this that are going to need to be addressed. And so that's something else to take into consideration. If we're just going to put it on the books and not put enough personnel to be able to enforce it, my recommendation is always, don't waste the ink and paper. But if you're going to put it on the books, if you feel strongly about it, make sure we have the personnel to go ahead and do what we need to do as far as enforcement.
And I think enforcement would be.
The beginning part of it, it'll go through the permitting process and the majority of it will be handled there until afterwards. If something pops up illegally, then it's going to be on code enforcement. Code enforcement, depending on the direction that we're given on the next month, we'll also review it along with the zoning process. We work hand in hand together. And so we, we, our intent is to stop it in the beginning and get them going in the right direction from the start. You're always going to have things that pop up that aren't legal, code enforcement always deals with that stuff. Our hands are off to the department or the, you know, police department if it's not ours.
Do we have enough trained personnel to handle that?
I think Commissioner Gannon, right now, Chief Miranda and the new city manager will be doing assessment of our code enforcement and might bring it under the wing of the police department, that they're just, just acknowledging this big place to hold tip, but they'll make the decision. They're going to give back to us.
So would that make enforcement down the police department?
It'd be a fault in the code enforcement, yeah, that would have backing up the police department to enforce.
It would only be one code officer if it goes under the police department, as he's suggesting it, which would be one person. And that person will be fresh, brand new and not know any of the zoning or code laws, and somebody's going to have to train.
At least you'll have someone full time and someone accountable. But that's up to the new city manager, how you want to say.
If I may also, I believe that the item name is wrong whenever we created this in 2021. It should just be 5.16, so should there be any amendment and approval, do you need to remove the 0.4? And the motions, just so you guys know. Right, Laura, it should be.
Correct, it's just a 5.4, correct.
It should just be 5.16.
And then that'll be the cannabis regulations. On the one that I sent out, it has all the corrections. So this is the one that's coming for you today that has all the corrections with the red. And it has the corrected part up there, there's the 5.40, it'll be known as the cannabis regulation. So it would be to either pick this up to be published the way it is written with the red that's added. Or it would be to remove parts of this section or to completely go back to the drawing board again.
Correct. Patrick?
Yeah, you can, I mean, you take a look at what's been moved, is the corrected version, the red line version. And then, you know, each one of you has certain, certain issues that are important to you about what's in there. And that's based on our discussion in the last.
Patrick, press my man, I'll just, I'm going to advertise, act you advertise, then we still have to come back and vote on it.
Yes.
So if we make, I'm just saying, as a board, we make something that, decision here or not, that we're still not happy with in two weeks, we can still deny it.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can deny it, you can amend it, you can table it, there's all kinds of different options that you have.
I just want to make sure we wouldn't bottom decision tonight.
Right, and stick out for publication. In this, on the zone requirements, it does make, if you do, please take a look at that. Because it does state that no cannabis establishment or consumption area is defined in this chapter shall be in zone A or zone B. So it cuts out anybody in the family residential zones. They will have to be in zone C, D, or E, and it has to meet that zone's requirements. So if you're in zone E, you have to pay GRTs to the city if that business goes into zoning. So it will be, whenever they come and they apply for their licensing, we go through the permitting process, we'll also make sure that there is proof that the city will be getting the GRTs in order for them to be in zoning. If they don't, then they won't be allowed to be in that zone, is that?
Can I clarify some of that too? Ross, can you?
No, because it should be.
It should what?
I'm just talking myself.
Okay.
You know, we stay with, come back with another resolution.
If you do take a lot and do ask that you let me know what you would like to see removed or whatever you would like me to go in, please.
Okay, there's a couple of issues that need, still need to be addressed. Please go into the whole thing again after we go out with advertisement board, just feel comfortable what they have firm on, write down and be best table for our next board meeting. That's my recommendation.
Yes, if you're not comfortable with making amendment and going out for advertising, yes.
She's still firm on the density thing? This is Wondery Street block. Okay, fuck, just asking, it's not, it's not a lot, like you said, it's hard to say with the people.
It's not a lot, but like you said, as far as having the people that, you have one every block and we got twelve every street block. So letting them on the list and paperwork and everything.
So that's include growers or just sales?
No, it don't include all of them. So establishment, so the way it's written in the state code is they're under cannabis establishment or the, the consumption area. So every one of them falls into that category as an establishment. So there would be, it would be, everybody has to be that far apart. All retailers, manufacturers, producers, all of the above.
I'm just moving on with our, I read that whole thing over the weekend or so. It's good, it's a good proposal. We're going to keep bringing it back and we're going to find more and more issues. I see no point in saying, let's just move forward with it. It's going to happen one way or another.
Yeah.
We can always come back and make changes.
Well, the only, the only issue that we have is I, I thought the density thing was only on stores. That kind of makes sense to me. But on growers, I mean, if a guy's already living on one block and he's already growing, and the guy across the street that sees him making money, he wants to start. But he's, now he's got to move from that house to another house. There could be an issue there, because in the alcohol deal, you know, he used to have in Orlando across one street and back door on another street, you know, there was twelve of them all the way down every block in town, back when we used to drink more. But so, you know, I'm kind of torn here. And if you base that on water trucks, every other corner on this community has a water truck in it. So we didn't ordinance that either. So I'm struggling here a little bit. It sounds, it sounds silly in a way, but yet, you know, we've put a restriction on something that's coming in, um, that we haven't restricted anybody else.
That's possible because the state doesn't allow you to restrict those things, or it does for this.
But, but it's still, you still have that, that deal of.
I understand what you're saying.
You know, just because the state said it, doesn't mean I don't get sued for it, you know?
On this, you, you will not, because the state allows it and says that you can put density in the alcohol ordinance. The state would have to say, we allow you to regulate the density. So, and, you know, anything that's allowed is because the state is allowing us. We're not going, oh, well, we're only going to do this for cannabis, because the rest of them, they allowed us to, but we didn't. That would be a problem, yes. If, if alcohol and involving other things you're talking about, the state allowed us to put density and we didn't, then yes, somebody would have a case of saying, well, we did it on that, we didn't do it on this. So if you want to take that and, you know, look into all the other ones, make sure that state law didn't allow for density, you can't. The reason why this is being looked at is because the state law allowed us to.
Allowed it to, okay. Do they figure a large consumption of people are going to try to be active in it?
Maybe, and they want to keep, this is all about health, safety, and keeping, you know, everything where we come to, you don't want to condense a whole area and saturate a whole area. That's the whole point of zoning and taking a look at why we're allowing things in certain areas and stuff, is so that we can keep the peace, harmony, plenty of space, and it's not all crowded into one thing. So that kind of helps to establish that. The county also put into, I don't know if y'all have been, if you've looked, that the county also is putting forth there cannabis ordinance. And they do, and theirs, they, they actually are addressing that also in the county on their ordinance that I have. I'm looking at what the county was going to do. And they do the location restrictions, the time, hour, registration within the county, and the establishment, the cannabis consumption areas, and registration fee and stuff like that. So the county is also looking into putting restrictions. And there's, they actually put in a density restriction on theirs also. So it's not unheard of, if somebody.
So what's their density?
Density restriction is one thousand, two hundred and fifty feet of another cannabis retailer or cannabis consumption area. There's just retailer or consumption area, which you were speaking of, the retailer. And they did not say establishment, which cut every single one of them. So if you want to look at it in that aspect and only say retailer, what they did, you can do that. If you want to say establishment, it means everybody within that type of business.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stone. Did you make the motion?
I did.
Why don't we pick on?
No, I only found one typo. It's on five point zero four, point zero eight zero. I think that should be four zero. I have myself, I have to find something.
Say that again, please, sir.
It's one of the last ones. Five point forty point zero eight zero, the personal use cultivation production.
Yes, sir.
The four and the zero were swapped. The four and the zero are back.
Oh, you're right. It is, I see what you're saying. Just left, that, that needed to be corrected. It's oh four, yes.
And then the other one is the. Reserve section five point four zero would be by amendment.
Actually, I don't, I don't believe you'll need to, because Laura said that she addressed that in the ordinance draft, that it shouldn't read right. Patrick, would that be okay? If he doesn't amend the title to say five point.
Yeah, because I think she said the red line version, which is the version that you have in front of you.
Yeah, but when I made the motion, I used the wrong section though.
Would that be okay?
I'm just going to amend it to where it was correct, to the five.
I guess you could do, I mean, it'd be more of like a papographical error than, than not, but I, I think you could probably just make that change and see if you get a second. If there's any other changes you want to make for discussions, that's probably the time.
I'm either. I'd like to amend my motion to include the, uh, on the motion made from five point sixteen point zero four zero to section five point four zero, and then papographical error in the five point forty point zero eight zero, personal use cultivation production.
Motion was made by, uh, the, motion was amended by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Poe. Any further discussion? Shannon, roll call.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Bow.
Yes.
Yes, resolution passed. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
I know what, uh, on it, go ahead and do the proclamation right now. Officer's waiting to get to work. He's getting called, and I, I don't want to say. So, long to proclamation of twenty twenty-two, they asked zero one African American History Month, whereas the month of February has been designated as African American History Month throughout the United States. And whereas twenty twenty-one marks the forty-sixth year of African American History Month, and we are recognizing the contributions African Americans have made, that being pivotal in the making of American history, and whereas it is a time to celebrate the contributions of our African American citizens and recognize their contributions to the city of Lexington, Lee Counties, and the United States of America. Now therefore, I David Trujillo, Mayor of City of Lexington, you may so to hereby reclaim the month of February twenty twenty-two as African American History Month at this license. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for financial report.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Poe. Ms. Kennedy?
Uh, yes. In next month's report, um, you'll notice that. I, I asked the girls just to do the expense of hurdle, uh, report that you're used to seeing. I've noticed some redundancy in the Vista report that comes with it, and then also the, uh, summary report. So I think they included in the attachments this time. I'm working on a big project right now to try to determine grocery seat dispersments. Um, so once I kind of get my legs under me about, or with that project, then I'm going to be bringing the grocery receipts report, uh, going forward on the, um, commission meetings. Um, obviously, that's our largest source of revenue, so that's kind of where I'm starting. Um, but I got started on that at the request of, of Evelyn with the economic development. So, um, just trying to get a couple of birds with one stone on that. And, um, so this, next month, you'll see this report along with some grocery revenue information. But I can answer any questions about this one.
Piero, Piero's project was that, miss?
That's a CPA that we hired for in the morning. Yeah, that's only the first of several, could be, yeah, it's the eighty thousand, they said, was the estimate. So I think that's going to be determined. I don't know if we're paying by the hour or how that contract was done, but.
The James Cook.
Um, that was wastewater repair.
I really do.
I think that might have been a motor. It's probably just a motor.
Yeah. Yeah.
They did purchase a motor. The stations have gone out and they run.
Yeah, you say that, I remember that.
Well, I'd like to add to the financial report that I, I feel like in about ninety days, I'm going to go into a closed session and, uh, Ms. Kennedy, Ms. Kennedy, if you review what all her findings that she's filed and all the corrections she's made, uh, with our county and our treasurer, very, I'd like to see that, probably still be about ninety days, have a busy, probably getting cold or everything. She's been with her door closed for about all day, working money through Friday and plus weekends, and trying to, uh, do good accounting practices, uh, pretty, I mean, very, very, getting a load of work that's going to be doing, and I, I feel that you're getting in a positive direction that we see, uh, with our accounting.
Yeah, we're, I'm running into, now that I've had, um, the other email addresses forwarded to mine, I'm, I'm running into a lot of deadlines that have been kind of sitting on the back burner, um, you know, things with grants and reports and stuff that are due from all sorts of different government entities. And so, um, I've got a lot going on.
We really appreciate. Any further discussion? There's no further discussion.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bow?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Faye, so I have five.
A minute, second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Poe, seconded by Commissioner Gandy. Any further discussion? No further discussion, roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Bow?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
We are adjourned.